All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, regular meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The first item on our agenda tonight is the public hearing for the FY 2025 budget.
This is an opportunity for residents and all interested persons to comment on the budget, either as a whole or any part thereof. The public hearing is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, no.
All right. Ms. Fabian. And a second?
Second.
Seconded by Armando. Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. Roll call, vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The motion is carried 5:00. The public hearing opened at 7:00. Was it 05:00 PM? All right. No one? All right. Well, moving on. We're going to keep the public hearing open for the budget discussion, and then we'll close it. Public comment. It's the next item. All right. Moving on. It's easy. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent update.
And then we have the new hiries that we've broken down into who's getting health insurance and not, and there's a lot of cross-checking that's taking place with the town side. I want to thank Matt's office and Rose upstairs for their diligence to align all of that stuff. The update on my two-year goals is that the standards and indicators committees have been established with administrators, and I'll send you an email or I'll send you a memo just stating who's on what committee so that you get that as part of my process. My entry plan is on time to come to you as a draft in January for any public comment and so on and so forth, and then you don't need to vote it, but provide you the information. That's that kind of 30,000 feet. It's probably going to be somewhere around 30 to 35 pages in length with all the documents that are attached to it, a lot of data and information that I know some of you really like to take a look at. Since the 1st of October, we have registered 78 students. I just want to say that again, since the 1st. As you know, the 1st is when we report our enrollment data. So we've had 13 students at the Wilkins, 18 students at the OMS, 17 students at the high school, and then the elementary's range from 3 to 9. Pretty significant issue. Two more real quicks. The EV charters update up at the high school. We are working to get those going. I will need to provide you an example of a policy because there is a charge to it, costs, and so we will have to have a school committee, some type of a very low-level school committee that says this is how it's used, when it can be used, and so on and so forth, because we don't want people on campus when school's in session, that type of stuff. So a policy recommendation will be coming to you once I actually have some costs and all that stuff. And then lastly, I can announce tonight that the state is consolidating the newcomers, migrant students populations throughout the state from over 70 school districts to, we don't know yet, except that the second hotel here in Stoughton is open for business. That is the Hampton on Page Street. That is 96 rooms. We have information sent to the town and to me that, in fact, there's a second hotel opening, and this idea is, I think, is to consolidate, not have people so far away. The second part of that is I do not have any formal information, but informally through my colleague in another district, and I'm going to not use names for the sake of professionalism, but she reached out to me and had just gotten off a phone call whereby she was informed that her students were all coming here to Stoughton, to that hotel. That is 34 students for a total of 75 newcomers, migrant students that we will have potentially as of next week. Again, these are very broad numbers and no specific dates because we don't have those yet. We have significant, significant concerns about this, simply because of the numbers that I just informed you about of increases in enrollment, the 41 students that we have done everything possible as a team to welcome, since we are a very diverse community of learners, and we've been able to be successful with that. We have still not seen any funding from the Commonwealth on this, so we're running probably in the vicinity of half a million to $700,000 of issues. Therefore, tonight you'll see in the article a supplemental article for FY '24 to just be safe, for lack of a better phrase. I have a call with the commissioner tomorrow, one-to-one call. We'll inform him very nicely but direct that this is a concern. We're coming upon what we call our Brazilian summer, which is where we see a lot of our students who come from Brazil in January through June. They are here with family. They're living in town. That's averaged on the low number of the high teens and 30s to as much as 50 students, K to 12. And then lastly, I just don't understand or see why moving children who have only been here for a while, who are just getting used to settling into a school system, who are just getting used to having friends who there's just learning each other's languages and cultures, whose teachers are just being able to provide them a safe place, deal with the trauma, why we think that the holiday season in December is a good idea to close these hotels and consolidate. There's much better, much better opportunity for that. If we could get some relief in terms of explanations and details, then I would be able to share that with my staff. I did release, for your knowledge, I met, sent to communication to admin, specifically the principals, I sent to communication, I met with the EL department at the elementary and at the high school today, and I, and I informed the staff in writing earlier today of what I knew and that I would keep them up to date of what I know about. We have been professional, caring, supportive, and here we are, the holiday season, and we're up against it as a school community. We welcome all, but the fact is we need the Commonwealth to step up with the supports that are needed. That is my last superintendent's update. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Lindsay?
And the estimates of costs?
So the estimated cost right now kind of up in the air. So the idea is, and I'll give you some examples. One student coming from one of the hotels, our current hotel, to a school is $55 a day. One student, $55 a day. So if you have 41, the math is pretty high. We have added staffing to support students, paraprofessionals, translators, both Haitian Creole and Portuguese, Brazilian Portuguese, because we're mandated to do translations and supporting of the families and so on and so forth. We've had to hire teachers in the ELL program going back into the fall, and we have to do all of the testing with these students, which takes time and effort away from everything else that we have to do. So if I was a, if I'm a betting man, we're at a half a million dollars minimum. And here's the other thing, McKinney-Vento, which I know Mr. Ford works with specifically. You know, when we're getting bills for $10,000 a month to transporting a couple of students, that's, that's pretty significant. So these students that are potentially coming from another hotel, the parents, according to the regulations that we've been told, they have the right to say, no, we still want them to be picked up from the Stoughton Hotel and driven to the district they came from, which will be about an hour ride. But what do you do when you're up against it like we are? Do we just, do we challenge that and say it's not a good idea, or do we support it and quote, "split the bill"? There's a lot that goes into this stuff, and we just don't have any real direction at this time, and that's what I'm going to be asking for tomorrow. There are fewer communities now being impacted by this.
Coordination with other departments in town?
Yeah. I mean, in general, the coordination for us has been, we get notified, but really, to be quite honest, there isn't a big hit, and I, Mr. Coulter and I just talked about this yesterday, there really isn't a day-to-day big hit to police and fire per se. For us, it's day-to-day everything, from transportation to education to lunches to all of that stuff. It's just more detailed than it is to potentially a call that's made because of a situation at the hotel, which I'm sure has happened or does happen, so I'm not questioning it. But it's really about the school department providing those supports.
What are the teachers' comments? Any concerns at this point?
My staff is stressed. I just put it plain, I mean, they're doing everything they can. They're highly qualified, highly trained, but this is stressful. You know, this is stressful. These students are, many of the students are, they're kind, they're gentle, they're nice. Some have behavioral issues like any other young child, but trauma is a real issue. Trauma is a real issue, and that's why I'm so against this move right now. Let them settle in. I mean, if a parent came in and knocked on our door, April vacation, and said, can you keep my kid until June, we'd probably do the right thing, say, yes, came until June, transfer out. Maybe not, but the fact is, this is such a bad time to do it. To transition these kids again just doesn't seem fair. But my staff is absolutely, both administrators and teachers are overwhelmed with all of this constant change. And then, you know, we all think long-term. Okay, Jonathan and I talk about, here comes the accountability, you know, three months from now, six months from now, come the kids, blah, 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 and that, that, and all this other stuff, you know, this stuff that drives us nuts. Nobody's talking about how, what we're going to do about accountability with migrant students. Are we going to give ourselves any type of flexibility with that? So.
What's the worst problem you see? The financial needs?
Well.
Or the space needs in schools?
It's a huge space crunch for us right now. Huge. Because, you know, at the secondary level, you know, if we have X number of students coming, it's about taking EL classes and making them larger than they already are, which is not in the best interest of the students there or this, and/or the students coming in. So space, scheduling, stress, I mean, educators in general, we want to do the right thing for kids, and when we're constantly in and out and churning these kids, it's, it's hard.
Will it be big enough to reconsider perhaps the size of the new school we're planning?
No. That won't even be considered by MSBA at this point because I think that one of the biggest issues is what is the long-term plan? I will tell you that some of the families that are coming to us, I was informed, again, by my colleagues, so this is just from what they know of working with those families, is that they are getting working papers, that they are looking for work. So that's a step in the right direction. They're, they're going, they've gone through a process of being reviewed and checked and all that, and now they're, you know, they're being given working papers so they can begin the process of getting out of hotel rooms themselves and finding rental space and all of that stuff.
Lindsay, you got a question?
Yeah, well, not a question, just more of a comment. I just, this is a really stressful situation from a lot of perspectives, like from the staff perspective, from budget perspective, but I think it's important to remember, and I think I have full confidence that everyone on our team is doing this, like staff, administration, teachers, like these are our newest student members of our community, and like, just, I really am so grateful for all of the work that the team has done so far to meet their needs and will continue to do to just make sure that they feel supported. It is like such a hard time to make a transition in the year, so like, I know that we're going to be there to support like all of their needs as they come up, and also would love, love an update after your call with the commissioner, just to see like what the state is going to do to help us with this, because it's a huge ask, and like, you know, I know the will's there, but just want to make sure that like the resources are as well.
Yeah. I, you know, there's probably, I said it today during one of the meetings, I said, there's probably no district that's more accustomed to the issue of linguistic diversity and diversity in general than Stoughton Public Schools is, and I say this as a new person but as a resident of the town who's lived here and was myself an EL student, as you all know. So we have a history of this, and, and, and so that is one thing that is positive. My job will be to absolutely get our staff and everybody, and they will, to support whoever comes through the door, but at the same time, I've got to, I've got to make a good fight on behalf of the institution, that there needs to be more supports that are coming from the Commonwealth besides my being told by my colleague that this is happening, and not somebody at the state calling me directly and saying, stop planning for this. Because I also want my administrators and my staff to go on vacation for the break with some mental capacity of, we've addressed it, we know what we're doing, it's going to be a headache, but, you know, we have a plan. So yes, we will absolutely do the, do what's right for kids, and then also make sure that the policymakers and all of that understand that there needs to be some more that comes our way.
Chris.
Just like to reiterate everything that Lindsay said. I'm so grateful just for the staff's flexibility and willingness to embrace this as it comes forward and to make sure that the students are not treated any differently than any other community member, and I really look forward to an update after your call to hear what the commissioner has to say.
Oh, yes. One more question, Armando, and then I have a question.
Any word with the current student body? Any, any information from the current student body, a reaction? Are they stressed also?
I think that, I think anytime you have changed, there's an opportunity that stress takes place. I haven't dived into what our students are saying or not staying at this point, but I will tell you that in terms of the day-to-day operations of our schools, it's been pretty fluid in terms of the issues, the typical issues that we deal with. We're not necessarily seeing new issues, except some of our younger students, we are seeing some behavioral issues that are concerning, but as we know, we've had that discussion about a lot of children in those earlier grades, not just our newcomer students.
Shifting gears a little bit, I want to revisit the EV charters. I had a follow-up question from the community member who has been asking about them, if there is an expectation that that policy would be before us at the January meeting.
That is my goal, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Dr. Baieda, moving on, let's go to our Student Advisory Committee representative. Tonight we have Ms. Morgan Gropey. Do you have an update for us?
Yeah. So we, in the entire high school, just had our progress reports come out for term two today, and so we will be rolling into the second half of our second term starting tomorrow. For our senior class, we just recently had our Oscar night, which was a very big success. Our senior student council ended up rolling in around $2,000 to go forward to our prom, which is very, very good for us, seeing that, that will be coming up soon, and we'll have to start paying those deadlines. Student council as a whole, we did just wrap up all of our stuff for pep rally, which was a major success. Our student council had a lot of fun doing that, the spirit wall, things like that were very exciting, and it was a good way to connect with the class and really just kick off the year. As of right now, we don't really have much going on, but we'll be just getting ready for planning into the new school year and opening. I know NHS is starting some tutoring after school at the library on Mondays and at the school's library on some days after school. And yeah, so basically, we're just kind of starting to roll into the part of the year where we just kind of get our work done, get our heads down, and do some internal work. So yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions for our Student Advisory Council representative?
I was just going to make a comment as a former graduate. It's kind of cool being back for a rally.
Yeah. I did go to the football game. It was great. Yeah, it's good to see all the students support and, yes, the pictures from the rally were terrific. Yes.
I did have one comment slash question in regards. So one of the things that I've heard about is that there is a need for tutoring of the adults, of the newcomers coming to our community. They're looking for people to tutor them in English. I don't know if that offer's extended to anyone under the age of 18. In the past, the library has always looked for people over the age of 18 to be adult tutors. I know they have a training program, but given the number, the sheer number of newcomers in our community, and perhaps the increased demand for tutors, I wonder if there might be an opportunity for the National Honor Society there.
Yeah. As of right now, we just have it as student-based for community service. We have been doing so, students will volunteer to help out with things like that. I think to have that accessibility to someone to help with that language barrier, we might need someone else to step in, just based off, as high schoolers, we may not have the practice and the ability to help out with breaking that language barrier and helping students with understanding that difference. But I'm sure we'd be very open to helping with that and partnering with like teachers or any other adults that would like to help, but yeah.
Fabian, Chris?
Hi. I just had a question on, like, do you guys, the coat drives and the food drives, is that still going on, and are you guys marketing that in like Facebook?
Yeah. So we actually have a couple of different organizations in the school system that do that. So for, we have an MIA ambassador program, so basically that's three student athletes that are representing our school, and I'm one of them, so I can just, you know, now, I guess, but we're going to be opening up some coat drives and other events like that so that what we do with those is we'll have some of those donated to the town, and then we'll bring some things to, we do a winter huddle where we meet with other sports athletes throughout the entire state, and we'll bring some donations to that, and then those all get distributed around all of Massachusetts to towns that need them the most. So we will do things like that. I know we did during pep rally, we had a food drive, we did hygiene, school supplies, toys, and there's another one, but it's not coming to my head at the moment, but we did do four days of big, like, almost competitions throughout the grades where if you brought in a certain, like, everything you brought in for your grade was a point, kind of encouraged students to donate a little more, so those donations all will be rolling out of our school shortly into the town, and yeah.
Is there a way to, Dr. Baieda, to leverage or piggyback some of that with the newcomers that are coming? Maybe provide some services?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. We have done some of that already through a number of different community organizations that have been supportive of our newcomers, and we continue to do so. It's, a lot of our needs right now are actually around the adults in terms of clothing and in preparation for what is probably some of the coldest weather they've seen already because of where they come from. So yes, we are definitely constantly coordinating, talking, asking, so on and so forth.
And how does the community, I guess, get this information?
So there's a couple of different ways. Some of them, it's done verily, I hate to say it this way, but kind of low-key. It's like, you know, the organizations reach out to us, we tell them, yes, this is what we need, but we're more than willing to put out a marketing strategy, if you'd like, or some, some type of a bigger, it's all about, for us, it's all about where does everything go? Right now, it's kind of like it gets picked up and it goes because, you know, what comes with all of that stuff. So yeah, we're happy to do that. We can follow up.
Thank you, Morgan.
Yeah, and also on top of that, I personally didn't know that there were any donations going on, but I'm sure if there's a way we could reach out to the school, like even some of the teachers, I'm sure you guys would love to help donate into the town, and even students, like, obviously, we may not have things that adults can use, but we may be able to reach out to our parents who might not have seen these things about donations, and we could even set up bins outside of the school, things like that, so that there could be teachers helping, so it's not just in-school help or in-community help, things like that, but I'm sure that our student council and even National Honor Society would love to help out with that and help you bring awareness to the need for those donations in the different like categories and things of such.
Thank you, Morgan. Really appreciate it. All right. The next item on our agenda is FY '24 budget and articles. Turn this over to Dr. Baieda and to Ms. Heidi Perkins, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance. Our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, so.
So thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to also mention that Michelle Govey's here tonight. She's our Assistant Finance. She'll be one of the people that you'll be doing a lot of emailing when you want to get into the needs about certain things and so on and so forth. So we welcome, have welcomed her since this fall. On the articles, if I may, first, Madam Chair, two changes. Number one, Article 2, school safety, that is the lining and marking of parking lots, that is a $55,000 cost for the remaining seven schools. Okay? So just wanted to make sure. So that is a lot about, to Mr. Barbosa, some of the things we talked about, about signage, about making sure that the yellow lines and white lines.
Yellow lines and white lines and all the lines that we need in the schools and the one ways and so on, so that as things do come up with issues, they're clearly marked, and we can then do a better job of enforcing it, to be quite honest. The second article is the newest article, which is in the back, which is the FY '24 supplemental budget article, and this is really about the issues I just spoke about earlier. So this is McKinney-Vento, the positions, the transitional classrooms, the 40 newcomers, which is now 75, just the changes that have happened since you, this was printed for you, and this is just to kind of protect ourselves in terms of needs if the funds don't come through the way they're supposed to. This is literally all centered around all of these supports that we've had to come up with, and it's, and it's a growing list, for the record.
On the issue of the budget, in terms of, I provided you this memo, the budget pretty much stays the same. Once you get through tonight, then this will be on our website so that it can be a working document, if you will. I think this will be a working document for quite a while, and I want to speak to that really briefly. To see the numbers before you speaks of significant changes and issues that we are undertaking as a district and have been undertaking as a district for some time. From the increase in the needs of students in special education and ELL, excluding even our newcomer migrant situation, we are seeing an uptick every single year, and we have projection enrollments that I'll share with you in January from our NESDEC group that shows that we are going towards 4,000 students over the next few years, as we are just as low as 3,000, 3,500 a couple of years ago. We're at 37,48 and climbing as we speak. The attack plan on this budget has been to, A, make sure that the numbers are as accurate as possible. You will see that some of the increases are pretty significant. This includes the tentative vote you'll take later on contracts, and then there are some earmarks, if you will, for the paraprofessionals that are in here but not specific to a line item, if you will, because we're still negotiating, and then everybody else is under contract for FY '25, we'll begin with some unions next year. The other part of this that we are trying to undertake is really doing a couple of things. One, making sure that we are going to continuously look at our class sizes. That is a big concern. I'll have a report for you probably for March, just because that's our next collection of data, but will really show, and right now I'm tracking all classrooms in K-5 by, by month, so every month I'm getting an update from the principals of actual numbers in the classrooms. And then lastly, once we have an understanding from the Commonwealth on House One, potential SOA, then we will have further discussions about our budget and what our final numbers really looks, really looks like. What you have before you was taken down from what was requested, but we have some significant holes around federal monies, ESSR monies, that we are continuing to try to keep positions and backfill. In the case of the AEPs, we're really trying to address principals becoming instructional leaders at the elementary level. Those are Unit B recommendations. We have a change at the middle school, as you know, a recommendation to the two deans, literally to try to address a couple of different things. One is pretty high chronic absenteeism at the middle school, as well as trying to deal with student behavior and discipline and expectations, because as students get older, the expectations are more, but there's also issues of legality that become so significant to young teenagers that we want to make sure we're doing everything we can at the early ages. And then lastly, we have attempted in this budget to really, for lack of a better phrase, clean up some areas that needed monies, if you will, or line items moved around in order to show that, that the line item was actually 400,000, it wasn't in somewhere else, it's in this line, technologies and [inaudible]. It wasn't in somewhere else. It's in this line. Technology is an example of one that you see as a big line there. So those are kind of, in some ways, corrective actions. Our anticipation, and I'll defer to my colleagues here, our anticipation of this is that once House One is published, as we know, that's the governor's bill for the budget, then there'll be deliberations, as what happens every year. You know, we will get estimated numbers from those estimates. We'll be able to then tell you what some of our priorities should be and shouldn't be in terms of the requests that we've made for you. It's a bold budget. It's got a lot of holes that we're trying to fill. We may have to come back to you and say we can't fill them all at the same time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the budget?
I have questions, because I have so much to learn. On Superintendent's office, I didn't realize we actually rent the building. First numbered item, Administrative Assistance Office. It says Building Rental.
Sorry, I'm not seeing it on the first line.
Under Superintendent's office. Actually, the second. Administrative Assistance. It says Building Rental.
Can you open it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I probably should have gone over there. We have different community organizations or others that rent to come in and use the building, say on weekends, on a Saturday, whatever else, that's always gone on. We also have the after-school program that is a private vendor who pays a lease payment to the district. So that's all revenue in. So this is not a cost. This is stating that the person who is in charge of handling those rentals in the offices here, their salary is being charged against that, so it's not, it's not from taxpayer money. We're using the rental fund to pay that.
Thank you.
And that's been so for years.
We should probably note that a little clearer as well, because I get a point that the way we did, we considered exactly, because I know you're saying building rental revenue. We'll talk about it.
Any other questions or comments, Lindsay?
Yeah, just a question about House One, SOA. Do we have a timeline on those?
So it's typically the third week in January, right around that 24th to 27th timetable. Last year was, was later, just because it was a new governor, but we would anticipate middle, end of January is typically when we see it.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll know, we'll know fast numbers right away. It's usually within minutes, you know, we have some projections.
Okay, thank you.
Armando.
On the science, I was kind of surprised that budget was that small compared to other departments, because I always think of science as going updating equipment, new equipment. So I was just wondering.
Most of our equipment right now is going to be supplies and materials within science. We do have a new high school, so a lot of our, bigger items are already there. What we are trying to do, though, is we did have some hiccups in the last few years in terms of supplies. I believe science, for example, thought they had $30,000 this current year. The actuality is, I think there was like $14,000 in there or something like that. I wanted to speak, so we have to do, so we don't have big line items like that right now because, to be quite honest, foundationally, the high school is relatively new. Most of it's going to be within materials, if you will.
And under the Jones Early Childhood Center, there's a instructional equipment. How would that work if majorities' supply expenses paid by the special ed education budget?
Yeah, so because students are, in fact, we are mandated to provide direct services for special education students, so those would be backcharged to the special education office. We also collect tuition in general education for our quote model students, our peer students, and that goes into the operating budget of the Jones.
Couple of other questions?
Sure.
Administrative High School, there's a book rebinds. Do you actually pay for books to be rebounded?
Yeah.
As opposed to buying new textbooks?
It's a combination of both. Sometimes we buy new textbooks, but we do have rebinding that place on a really, on a pretty yearly basis.
Oh, okay.
Depends on the need. You've got to remember that in some cases, we may be, and again, this, I'm tossing out something, I don't know to be factual, but from history that I've seen, is we may be in the middle of reviewing and new purchase of textbook, and so we're holding on for the year or two of the books we have. We rebound them at a less price because we're going through a curriculum. That's been my experience with that.
Photocopies, lease maintenance, that, probably because I don't know any better, that's, that price seems really high, at $134,000. That's just copying paper?
I'll defer, but I believe that's correct.
The paper's actually, we'll figure in another area, but the photocopiers comes under our Facilities Director, and this was for quotes to us. So we have a lot of copiers in a school district. So usually with a maintenance plan, they are usually purchased under the state bid to the best possible price, and these were, you know, before I came here, but I'm sure they're under the state bid for your leases, and then we usually try to mend and start another lease offer, so.
So they're leased, not purchased?
Typically, everybody leases, yes. And so they do have leases on them, and again, they come with a service contract, so we don't have the repairs to pay for. But we do, under those arrangements, get so many copies a year. They do monitor it. They, you know, they're company buy from rego or wherever it is. You can actually go into your machine and see how many copies, and they bill you ready copies over in the amount that's covered under your lease. So it's the lease itself, and then there's certain repairs you might have to pay for, depends, but, and then you pay the overages.
The reason I brought that up is because I actually, I volunteer for charity as Executive Director some years ago, and we used to lease a copying machine. And, but at the time, copy machine printer, at the time, the price, when I was there, had dropped substantially for copy machine, and it was a lot cheaper to buy four or five copy machines than it was to lease one for the year. And I was wondering if, I know what, this school probably uses bigger machines, but I was wondering if anyone's looked at that in the last few years?
If you're asking if there's a free discount, essentially?
No. Get rid of the leased ones and buy our own. And when they stop work, then we toss them and buy another one. At least with the, with the charity I volunteered in, it was cheaper to do it that way.
So I did just buy quite a few of them for the three brand new schools in Watertown right before I left there. They were around $70, $800 apiece to buy, all right? So that's what we looked at, just rounded up $8,000 apiece to purchase. Times a lot of number of them, and I can't say that the budget could support all of that output in a year. As we know, we're going to freeze right now, so to be condensing what might be a three-year lease payments into a single year of purchasing, unless you purchase so many.
Over time.
But then you also have to pay for the service agreements that is on top of.
No, I'm saying they were, at least in their charity, it was so cheap, copy machines, printer combination, that it was, we could have bought three or four of them per year for the amount we're paying for at least for one machine. So even if we had to toss them out every few months, it was cheaper than leasing. So, but that was when prices of copy machines and printers dropped substantially. So my question is, has anyone had a chance to review that to see if, if we can save some money that way?
I'll be honest with you, I have not had a chance to look at this because we are in existing leases that we can't get out of. Once the lease is up, they come and pick up the machine, or you have to buy it out, which is about $2,500 to buy it out. And by, in the volume of the school, at the end of three years, some of them are pretty much done anyway. The repairs become, you know, $2,000 call to replace the elements, the heat element and stuff like that. So they can be extremely expensive, so. And then if you don't renew the lease, because they'll pick it up and dispose of it at the same time that you have, you do lease one pickup, then you're also talking disposal costs when it's time to get rid of it. And they have, currently have anyway, say on the rego machines, for instance, a rebate if you are replacing, not one of their own machines, but if you have a competitive machine or a printer or something like that. So I was able to get several thousand off of each one of the purchase where it was by finding our oldest printers and machines around and using that as a rebate chase.
Armando, I don't want to drag this out too much, but guess who gets to sign the copier lease? We do, so. Yes, when this comes up, this will be, we can talk about that more now. But right now, we have this existing lease that we signed, I believe, last year? Year before, sometime in my time, so we can talk about it more. Any other questions? Fabian, Chris, questions, comments? Most of my questions have been answered already. Are we ready to vote on this? We're going to approve the budget in each article separately, so this will be a number of votes right in a row.
Oh, sorry. I thought of one more question about the articles.
Sure.
So for the FY24 supplemental budget, it sounds like we're putting that in as a placeholder with the possibility that we could dismiss it if there's no need for it by the time town meeting comes around?
That is correct. It's a, it's a hold article to beat the deadline of articles being published by the school committee to the Select Board and then the process. And then it would be pulled if, in fact, we don't need any money.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I had that.
And we don't have an estimate right now of the cost of that? Are we just doing it as placeholder?
Placeholder right now, but I, my plan is after the first of the year to take a serious look at some, some of these. What we're trying to get through is a couple of other things first, as you know, and then we'll come back with just information for you.
Okay, and we'll revisit that then. Any other questions, comments? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the FY2025 budget?
So moved.
I'll give it to Chris, second. Armando?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion is carried 5-0. Next is to approve Article One, School Safety Vestables. Just making sure, no more, no more questions on the school, the vestables for this one. All right. Motion to approve Article One, School Safety Vestables. All right, the motion was made by Fabian.
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Vote? It's been moved and seconded, so vote.
Aye.
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 All right, the motion has been carried 5-0. The next is Article Two, Safety, School Safety Lining and Marking of Parking Lots. We have the quote for the price on that. Do I have a motion to approve Article Two?
Can we make a motion to approve it as amended with the actual cost?
How about that? Motion to approve Article Two as amended with cost, with the cost estimate.
So moved.
All right, that has been, motion has been made by Chris, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Fabian. Motion has been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion is carried 5-0. The next is Article Three, School Safety Security Audit. Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve Article Three, School Safety Security Audit?
So moved.
The motion was made by Fabian. A second?
Second.
I'll give it to Armando here. This motion's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion's been carried 5-0. The next is Article Four, Transportation. Last chance for questions?
I have some questions.
Yes.
The bus, this is a potential purchase?
Yeah, so these are purchases of multifunctional buses that are 14 passenger plus a driver that will be utilized throughout the school district. Everything from our sports teams to student activities to wherever the needs are. For example, right now, we, we could be using them to transport our newcomer situation.
We don't currently have buses.
We do not.
And I guess my follow-on question is that, have we considered how we're going to maintain, where they're going to be parked, garage, and so on, how they're going to be fueled?
Yeah, that's going to be part of our discussions with the process. So my experience has been to do it through, quote, "a potential leasing process" that allows for you to have all those upgrades and so on done, and then purchase at the end. The other process is to purchase outright. This is, this is going with the purchase outright, and then we would be housing them on premises and then having to take them out to be serviced and so on and so forth. So that would be a second, that would be a separate contract from the servicing that we would have to create. Would be a budget item.
Are we getting an extra bus when one breaks down or?
Yeah, so the, the idea here is by getting four of them, that we'll be getting a small fleet over the next few years, because as you know, also finding the drivers for this is, is another issue, and we're looking to keep these positions as part-time positions and so on. And having potentially coaches using them and the, the teachers and all of that stuff. There's different processes that we're going to have to create as part of this. The reason why this has been put to now is this, these will not arrive for at least a full calendar year from the time that we request, that we actually get. So if town meeting votes it in May-June, in July, we go out and get the bid and put them out. We're not going to see these until the fall of '25, more than likely. So we have that time, if you will, to incorporate a budget location, so on and so forth. But we will plan as part of preparing for FinCom. We'll have some odds and ends about how we see this operating, if you will.
Thank you.
Yep.
Question, Chris?
Forgive me if we already covered this ground. I just have a three-second memory these days. Does this require a special class driver's license or?
I believe, I believe the answer says no.
Unless it's, unless it's a regular route to school.
Right.
If we're driving students back and forth, like from a hotel or, you know, another location in town.
Then we would have to.
Then we, and it does.
Okay, all right.
And our, and our goal really here is to take a look at not doing that, but if we have to go that route, you know, my, my goal would be able to hire people who can do that either for us, if, if needed, on-call type of situation. There aren't a lot of folks that really want a Monday-through-Friday bus transportation, AM-PM situation. That's the ride to the bus company. We're still short three right now with first student, if I remember correctly from last week, so, which is pretty significant.
Okay, I was just looking to see if there are any additional barriers to using them for a coach or a teacher if, if needed, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, can I have a motion to approve Article Four, Transportation?
So moved.
All right, I will give that to Chris, and second?
Second.
By Armando. It's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion's been carried 5-0. And last one, a motion to approve Article Five, the FY24 supplemental budget, our placeholder. Is there any other questions before we? Motion to approve Article Five?
So moved.
Motion is made by Lindsay. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Armando. The motion's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion's been carried 5-0. All right, thank you all. The next item on the agenda is Joint Cost Review. At this time, we have received an invitation from the Select Board to a meeting on Tuesday, December 19th at 6:00 PM. The invitation was sent to the Chair and the Vice Chair of the School Committee. We do not have any materials to review for that. Anything that we have is what was, has been publicly available at the Select Board meetings. We've been promised materials on the 14th, however, that's after tonight, and so we would not be able to discuss it without a separate meeting. You know, at this point, we, we've just seen we have a budget that has a lot of pressure points. We have a lot of things that we need to take into account. An increased need for special education services and ELL populations that's almost doubled in the past two years. We're going to have 150, maybe even 200 students by the time December is out, and we still don't know our status for our financial aid, our chapter summary, our SOA, our state or federal support for migrant families. And I'm really concerned about us taking on any additional finance or responsibilities at this time. I think honestly, a, a more productive conversation would be to sit down with the Select Board outside of the pressure of the budget season, maybe next fall, and to sit down and say, what common goals do we have for the town? What are, you know, our capital, long-term capital plans? What are, what are our challenges? I feel like that would be a more productive conversation than having them sit down and setting us down. However, that's, those are my thoughts. I really am very concerned about this continued desire to push costs onto us, that we are right now really, really struggling to understand our own budget to make sure that we have what we need for our kids, for the student population and student. So I don't know. So, I don't know, thoughts from the committee? Right now, I'm really very, very concerned about this request, but...
I agree with you 100%.
It's hard to see. We've gotten requests to take on some things that do make sense. I know in the past, we've talked about entertaining the idea of taking on the cost of crossing guards, but we're having trouble finding bus drivers, we're having trouble finding our own staff, and to take that additional responsibility on right now just feels like a lot.
Student population increasing with no additional funds?
Right. That's, that really concerns me. And the idea that we've had Munis, this software put into joint cost, the idea that somehow fire insurance got included at one point, I'm not sure how that's related to joint costs, but I'm just really concerned about this request, especially as we have no materials from the select board. I have not been able to sit down with the chair of the select board despite repeated attempts. We've just have not been able to sit down and discuss, discuss this, and this really needs to be discussion between the select board and the school committee because it involves budget and to some extent involves some policy. So that really needs to be our discussion between our two bodies, and it just has not happened at this point. I know this meeting's intended to be that, but that's my concern.
Can you speak to, I guess, the past and like how this has been handled? Because I'm like, this is the first time I've heard of this as well, as you and I.
Right. I know this has been a challenge for many years. I think Dr. Vayetta can tell that, tell us about the long-term history of this.
Yeah, there's a long-term history with every community, with many communities around the idea of joint costs. Right off the bat, it starts with healthcare, right? You take every employee, and you take your revenue, and you take that out from your day-to-day operational budget on the municipal side or the school side of business. So in our case, it's over $13 million, I believe, in the current budget, and probably going to go up. And then you look at other items as well, for example, borrowing items, and all of that is put into a cost share joint, if you will, understanding that revenue gets taken off the top. So in our case, it's about $35, $36 million. So if you, if you have 100, just using estimates now, if you have $100 million worth of revenue, then, you know, 36 of it right off the top is gone, and then you've got the remaining $64 million for everything. But the joint cost issues, I was, I've sat in your seat, as you know, goes back to when I sat in your seat in 1998, so this is how far. It's looked upon differently from committee to committees, to be quite honest, but it's in general been that all of those costs go in there, and they come off the top, and that's what happens. What is always a bone of contention, and I'm using the word from the perspective of parties, not choosing, is when one, one side says, in this case, the municipal side will say, "Well, we're actually providing this to you." It's not in your operational budget. And so in this case, I believe, I don't believe, I know that the idea is to put those into two different line items of joint shared costs. One says municipal, town hall, the other one says schools, and those monies are taking off the top. So if you did, as an example, if it costs $150,000 for the SROs and you were going to joint cost those, it would come off of that, of the top. Therefore, operational money for both sides is not available because it's part of that $36 million, because now, now it becomes $36,150,000, and so on and so forth that you can do. And the concern long-term is, how many of those line items do you do that for and agree to do? And if you do, at some point, that, that just squishes the amount of revenue that becomes available for balancing budgets, whatever they may be. So at the public meeting that three of us, and myself and three of the committee members attended, we, we heard some thoughts in general, no specificities, but some thoughts within the operating budgets that the town manager was going through with this, and it was just going through, it was just a presentation, Q and A, there was no, "I support it, I don't support it," by the select board or anyone else. The, the final cost shares, the discussion was that those aren't ready yet, they'll be ready for the next meeting. We were then informed in writing, both the chair and myself, that those would be shared on or about the, actually it says December 14th. That's when we'll find out when that happens. Myself and Heidi have met with the town manager and MJ in accounting and looked at some of the proposals that they had. In one particular case, I questioned it. It happened to be Southeast and Regional, and I said, "That's not even up for discussion as far as I'm concerned, because we have nothing to do with those students the moment they're no longer, they're no longer enrolled by us." Same thing with Norfolk Aggie, they're no longer enrolled with us, so they're not the responsibility, they are a town responsibility. Other discussions that came up was HR and the support that's needed at town hall because of the amount of employees that we have, and having something like a cost share that would provide them and employee to be able to do some of the work that we do, that, that they do, quote, "for the school department," and we want to dig into that a little bit more. And then there's the crossing guards, which were budgeted as a town employee number in the presentation. The SROs weren't. Those are the two critical that have been continuously discussed according to my review of agendas and minutes that I've gone online over the last few months and said, "Okay, what's going on? Why is this happening?" I haven't seen other lines. However, we do have a Schedule 19 agreement, which takes percentage of certain employees at town hall that do work, and is taken off the top. For example, X percentage of the town treasurer's salary is part of that, quote, Schedule 19 end-of-year report process, which basically reflects that 50% of the job is, at the end of the year report, is reflective of a school department, and so on and so forth. I think the biggest issue in this process is that the Schedule 19 is one thing, the joint costs are really a big item, and the biggest item, as you know from last year, was healthcare, which was in a state of urgency, emergency and crisis, I guess will be the words I use, and chaos. Unfortunately, the municipal government did everything that, you know, it could to try to save it, and then the school committee, as you know, supported it by taking $2 million and providing it to the town for the purposes of leveling all that off and leading to, I guess, a cutting of the expenses, if you will, to save the day. It's also $2 million that, right now, today, we will never see, and it's compounded forever. So the, the issues here with the stresses that we currently have isn't that we're not willing to listen, to talk, to discuss, that process is always in place, but we have to go slow here to go fast, right? If in fact, these discussions are going to take place. I'm adamant that is a policy issue and a budgetary issue that belongs with the school committee. And, you know, we can say whatever you want, Heidi was at the meetings, I haven't agreed to anything. What I've said is, okay, that's, you know, put that on the table, so on and so forth. The two items on the table have, were the SROs and the crossing guards. At the meeting the other day, the crossing guards were not part of that discussion. What did come up was Medicaid reimbursement, which is a $26,000 charge. Medicaid reimbursement is revenue that we send to the town, that we collect for our special education students, delivery of service model, and we get a percentage back through Medicaid that then goes into the general fund by law, by law. It's, that's not a town decision. So that, that discussion came up as well. And these, I'm just repeating things that were said at the meeting, these are not sidebars or anything like that. So what does that mean? Is it, does that mean it's, it's going to happen? Or does it mean that it's something that, there needs to be further discussion about? And right now, in this process, based upon some of the things that you've heard tonight, we're up against a real situation as a school department day-to-day because of an increase in enrollment that we did not and was not forecast for the district, regardless of the migrant student newcomer situation.
I want to reiterate that there is no agreement that the school committee is just not, is waiting to agree on. There is no existing agreement. We have gotten nothing from the select board except what's available per public, you know, what's been available at public meetings, so that's, that doesn't exist. You know, it's, it, there's a lot going on here, and it keeps changing. One of the things that we're missing is the rationale. Last year, we were told, because of the health insurance, that we needed to consider taking on the crossing guards and the SROs to help the town balance the budget and to help stabilize health insurance so they could free up money to put into that fund. This year, based on what we saw at the, the select board meeting that we attended, my interpretation of that is that the town doesn't have that crisis, is actually in fairly good financial status right now, which begs the question, why are we being asked to contribute to these? Is there, what is the purpose beyond? We've gotten questions, things like transparency, that we need to make this more transparent, that this is good for the bond rating. How is it good for the bond rating? We're still paying the same amount. So we haven't seen any of this, any real rationale behind this like we did last year when the stress was, we've got to solve the healthcare issue, and this is one proposal to do it, and that was to do the joint costs. So that's been a question that I still have. I haven't been able to get a select board person to answer it beyond vague statements like transparency and bond rating. Armando, question? Yes?
Let's say things a little bit harsher. The school committee saved the town last year, and the town wants to come back for more. And is it, it's, in my opinion, the answer is no. We can't save the town from itself. The town must save itself as we try to deal with the situation we have now. I'm really opposed to giving more money for the town. Every, every department's subject to their own budget and to stay within their budget, and if, if they can't, they can't, I believe they shouldn't. I think it's morally wrong to come in and ask the children of our town to support the town. And that's just taking resources. I mean, you mentioned a little bit like lunch. I'd prefer, if we had extra money, we put into better quality lunch for our, our students rather than give it to the town for, for whatever issues they happen to have. Everyone's responsible to fix their issues, and we've helped one year, and now the town has to give us a break and just let us go on and, and face our challenges. The town's not the only organization with challenges. We have our own, and I don't see any way possible we can help the town again. We can't just do it again. And next year, will they ask again? And the following year, ask for more money? It's got to stop somewhere, and we can't support the town on the backs of the children. And they, the town manager and the select board has to get their order in town, just like, and get their budgets in order, just like we're doing today here, and trying to manage what we can do. There is no extra money to help the town, and they shouldn't be looking for supplementing whatever budgets they might need on the backs of the children of the town. And I'm sorry for saying that harshly, but I really mean what I'm saying, and I just disagree. We attended the, the town meeting, and we're entering a slippery slope, as I've said already. They're going to ask for more money every, and every single year, and we just, no. I just, no.
I mean, I get, I really to listen to them, but I really think it's, it's much more productive conversation if we do this outside of the pressure of the budget season, if we sit down and say, "What are we working towards? What is the rationale? If it's about improving the bond rating, let's talk about what that means. What does it look like?" We have a lot to learn, we're a fairly new committee, and to, we have to understand our own budget before we get down things like, "Oh, it will just improve our bond rating if we have joint accounts, we organize differently," or more things in the joint accounts, or split up the joint accounts, so...
You know what would improve our bond rating? If the select board and the town manager manages their finances such that they're positive, they're not negative, they're not asking the school committee for more money. That would improve the bond rating.
It would, yes.
Yeah, no, I'd love to just jump in. I think I try to start from a place of assuming good intentions, right? Like, everybody here is trying to like do, like, we're trying to do what's right for students. Town manager and select board are trying to do what's right for the town, and like, I can definitely appreciate that. I've heard the town manager say in a couple of public forums, he really wants like open and honest communication, and I think like we can absolutely get on board with that. But I, but I think like, the goal here is really a collaborative discussion. Like, I think like you've been saying, Catherine, we really want to start with like, what are the goals that we're working towards, and start from like identifying the problem and what we're trying to solve, and like look at all of our options and the impacts of those, and like all of our possible solutions, instead of sort of picking one solution and sort of running with it without doing some of the pre-work there. So I think I'm definitely feeling a sense of urgency from the timeline that's coming from the select board, because that's like a really fast turnaround. We didn't get a lot of information, or much information at all, I think, before last Tuesday's meeting, and we actually went to the public meeting to get the information, which is like fine, but I think, I think if we're really looking at open and honest collaborative discussion, we want to make sure we have all that info ahead of time, we have the time to sit down with it, instead of doing this like super tight turnaround. And just like, you know, I can empathize with the urgency there, but we also really have some urgent student needs that we need to prioritize here, like this whole meeting has, has been about. So we just like want all the information ahead of time, and just making sure, like Joe said, go slow to go fast. That's what you said, right? Yeah, so just like taking our time, making sure that we can actually get at the goals we're trying to solve here.
Madam Chair, if I may, as a last comment from me anyways. So 10 years that I worked in another community, the idea that a budget is due December 31st is an issue that the school committee and the select board should have serious conversations about. And the reason is, it does establish this lack of talking about concrete, actual numbers of revenue from the Department of Revenue, from House One, and all of that stuff. Everything that we're going to do between now and the first, and House One coming out is, is good guesses. The town will know most of its revenue, it's, I should say, it's free cash, it's not going to know what House One says until it comes out. And I know that our finance committee does a very thorough job of multiple meetings to address the issues and so on. But when we have budgets due on, I hate to say it this way, theory, and not details, we know what we need, but if I knew that what our SOA money was today, or our chapter 70 was today, I could provide the school committee within a 10-day, actually, within a five-day turnaround, I could provide you exactly the budget that you should be voting and supporting, and either asking for more money from the town or saying, "We're in a good shape, we only need what net school spending says, we don't need any X, Y, and Z." In my last community, my budgets were not due to the town, much smaller town, so we couldn't use these dates, but my budget wasn't due until March. Even if we had a February 1st deadline here, like a hard February 1st, during the month of January, we could really, really, if you will, work the budget to the numbers because we would, we'd actually know what the revenue is. So then, you could really have honest dialogue and discussions about these topics. And I have mentioned this in passing to the town manager, who's, as you know, a former state rep, so he knows how this system works. And I think it's, and I know it's a charter and all of that stuff, but I think it's what leads to some of the contention that does take place, is that we, we all pass in budgets and we really then say, "Okay, well, where is this going to land?" And then we don't know it until House One comes out, and DOR sends us actually revenue examples, and, and then there's a deliberation for $60 more per student, or we're going to give more money to the municipalities because chapter 90 is going to be up, or whatever. None of that happens until the spring. I'm not questioning the people's decision-making at the end of the day on either side of government, I want to be very clear. I'm just simply saying that the calendar of events doesn't add up, in my opinion, after doing this in a number of other communities much smaller, does it differently, but uses factual numbers.
Actually, as I was reviewing the school committee budget minutes for years past, the school committee had, had asked the charter review committee to look at the due dates. I will follow up and see if everything, anything ever happened to that, but I will go back and try to find that. So we have asked in the past to have that reconsidered, and I'm not sure if it happened, or obviously it didn't happen, but somebody think about. There's a lot... There's a lot more to say about this, but I think we need to move on. We have a lot of business to, sure. Yes. Sorry, sorry, Chris. All right, Chris, yes.
The superintendent, I'm really glad you, you brought up that fact that the, the budget is based on theory. You know, we are, we are budgeting for tomorrow based on where the puck is today. And that can create a lot of shortfalls and overcompensation in the budget. It's really hard to do anything accurate or to respond in issues in real time when you've got that kind of methodology in place. I agree with previous statements around transparency. I love that idea. I love the idea of sitting down with the Board of Selectmen to really talk about cost and cost sharing, but based on a shared vision for the town, that then the school could figure out what, how they're supporting that shared vision, the town can figure out how they're supporting it, police, fire, all of that. And then we can use that as the methodology for determining where it makes sense to share costs and where it might not. I mean, ultimately, the funding source for a lot of this, not necessarily for the school budget, but the taxpayers, it's, it's coming from the same source. And, and to Armando's point, you know, making sure that we're, we're budgeting accurately in real time with real data will make it easier for us to do that, so that we can go back to the town and say, and this is why it costs this, and this is what we're supporting. And right now, we can't. It's hard, it's really hard to justify that. But, but agree with Les, Lindsay, we need to look at what's the problem we're solving for, and why is this cost sharing going to solve that? And I'm, I, we haven't heard anything along those lines. I would like to also make a move to take this out of, as the chair said, you know, out of current consideration with that sense of urgency, and, and sit down, and let's actually plan some discussions around this, thinking through what this might look like going forward as a process.
Fabian, anything to add?
No.
Okay. All right. I know, you just said no. Yeah. Jesus says no. All right. I'd like to move on to our new business, because we do have some things, and we have some guests who are here. I'd like to get to that, so we can get home and go to bed. The first item under new business is the Jo Mullen Scholarship acceptance. We have a letter requesting a new scholarship to be offered in the memory of Mrs. Jo Mullen, who worked as kitchen assistant, and then later cafeteria manager in the Stoughton Schools for 45 years. This scholarship is going to be offered to a graduating senior with a family member who works in the Stoughton Public Schools in food services. Can I have a motion to accept the Jo Mullen Memorial Scholarship?
No motion.
All right. The motion was made by Fabian. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Motion's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 The motion is carried 5-0. And thank you. We really appreciate this. It's very thoughtful. Remembrance of longtime employee Matt, do you know, have you, have anything to say about this?
Yeah, I would love to. Thank you. I was lucky enough to work at Stoughton High School for eight of the years that I've been in Stoughton. I don't think a day went by where I didn't have a cup of coffee with Jo Mullen, in her amazing sweater collection. If you know her, you know what I'm talking about. Just an absolute bright light of a human being and dedicated employee. And I think that the tribute of this scholarship and the reason a student will receive it is just a perfect tribute for Jo. So I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. Yeah. I like the memorial scholarships. It's, it's just a really great way to, to honor a family member or a longtime person, employee. The next item we have is the Stoughton Youth Lacrosse Scholarship Acceptance. This is a letter requesting a new scholarship to be offered for students who play lacrosse for Stoughton, or who were involved in the Stoughton Youth Lacrosse League, recognizing the role that lacrosse plays in kind of developing leadership and offering skills to students. Is there a motion to accept the Stoughton Youth Lacrosse Scholarship?
No motion.
Right. Motion was made by Chris. A second?
Second.
Nope, seconded by Lindsay. A motion's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right. The motion's carried 5-0. Thank you very much to Stoughton Youth Lacrosse for your support of our students. And now, the big item on our list is the STA Unit A MOA, or MOU, ratification or acceptance. So you have before you the work of many, many long hours. This, thank you very much to our STA team, some of them are here tonight, and as well as their MTA representative, Mr. Aaron Doxer, for all of your work, given many hours in this very hot room. Very grateful that we have reached an agreement, and we have a force, this agreement, to approve. So, any questions, anything you want to add? Talk to me about it for us.
I'm really happy for both sides. Thank you.
Yes.
I just, I, I think that the work that the school committee and the STA leadership did on this was Joe Mullen's work. There's a lot of change here. There's a lot of issues here, in terms of cleaning up that were take, that took place, that both sides came to compromises on. And it's making us a, a more competitive district in this very competitive economy that we're in. And so I'm looking forward to, to the next steps after this is ratified tonight.
Can I have a motion to approve? Oops. Yes, yes.
Yeah. I just wanted to comment. I think, I think this is an exciting contract. I think there's a lot of opportunities for teacher voice built in, and a really competitive parental leave policy, which I'm just like excited. I think this does a lot to take care of the teachers we have, and potential like new recruits. I also just wanna like shout out you and Fabian for all of the, the work, the hours, like the calm, the organization, the energy that you brought to the process. So I think that really.
Well, they met us, and then some. So, yes, we had people swearing us on, so.
Yeah. But I think what, what you brought to, I don't know, I feel like it was a very student-centered negotiation process. I'm just like very excited to see how we can support our students moving forward with this in place.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. I also want to reiterate Dr. Baieda and Lindsay's comments. Also, it was interesting working with you guys. And I want to commend us all, I guess, coming to the table, and the proposals that you guys presented to make this contract as comprehensive and updated as it can be and stuff. I know it took a lot of hours, a lot of meetings. Some were good, some were challenging. Nonetheless, but I think this is the right move. And I just wanted to know, I guess, your feedback on how, I guess, it was received with regards to the union?
So Craig Bowley, President of the Stoughton Teachers Association. Sunday night, we had our ratification. Hundred percent voted in favor of ratifying the contract.
Yay!
The district is really excited, and now we get to see, you know, the town is showing its commitment to education in Stoughton. And the teachers are extremely excited. And, you know, soon as you guys give the go-ahead, I'll be sending a Mass Text message out, and there'll be more celebrations tonight.
All right. Well, let's get them.
Congratulations.
Yes, let's get them. We have to vote first.
Madam Chair, just, just one, two clear clarifications. The, the CAGS was dropped off of your print. They should say Mass 45 slash CAGS on it, because that CAGS was never up for debate and discussion. So on the pay scale, just for clarification. And then, there's a couple of typo areas and areas of clarification that we'll be reaching out to the union to just cross-check on. But in terms of the product itself, it's a go.
All right. Let's get this vote done, so that they can go to Ben V up early tomorrow.
I believe that we approve the STA Unit A MOA, or ratify the STA Unit A MOA.
All right. Motion was made by Lindsay. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Fabian. Good. I'm glad you supported Fabian. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right. Yay. Thank you very much.
We'll send out, we'll, we'll send out formal, formal signature pages for the two sides to sign. Okay. So, but based on the vote, it's a go. It's, it's just a.
Yep. We'll just get that formality done as soon as possible.
So we'll get that one pager out to the association electronically. You can have your team sign it, or whoever you need signing it. And then the committee, typically it's through the chair, signs it, since it was a unanimous vote.
And I will sign as soon as I can. So I'll make sure you get that. Thank you. Yes.
We'll celebrate.
Go celebrate. Yeah. All right. The next item on our agenda is the school calendar draft presentation. This is the first look. We'll vote on it in January. I know this is always one of the questions I get asked the most about the school committee, is when are you guys gonna vote on the calendar? So we have a draft out. We'll be voting on it in January is the plan. But Dr. Baieda, I know you put together two options for us here.
Yeah. Thanks to the work of Mr. Ford and his colleagues in the office reader company. They really did it all. I started to tweak some things, and then I said, nope, this is too much, because it leads to some inconsistencies that we used to, except for one major change. And that is a debate and discussion on the 23rd of December. And so that's really the one major issue, is do we open up for Monday, or are we closed as of Friday? And actually, that Friday, the, what would be the 20th, would probably just be a regular day, because we wouldn't be coming back on the Monday. That's one option that you have. And then, we do have elections and stuff, as you know from the cover page that I provided you as well. But we, pretty much for the, the big day, which is the presidential election, we would be closed and doing PD. And that would be centered at the high school, so that way we don't have to worry about that.
Not doing problem resilience at that point?
Sorry.
Too soon?
Yeah, just quick question on the process. So this usually, like, we get some input on this, right? As a next step?
I believe the teachers usually get a look at it, too. I don't know if they looked at it.
Yeah, I sent it. I have it with you today. I sent it to them. You have it today. We sent it for, you know, informational. Do you, you know, do you have any thought, suggestions? They can share that with me, and, or in writing. I use your preferred in writing. And then you have that information as well.
Could we get student input on it as well, like from the Student Advisory Council? Is that something we could do?
I don't know if we've done it in the past.
The calendar is one of the things you control. You can do whatever you want.
Does the Student Advisory Council have any interest in looking at it?
Honestly, from my point of view, if with that Christmas break day, if you decide to do a half day on the 23rd, chances are, no one's gonna come in. So I mean, if it's a day you get out earlier, and it counts as a day at school, it, it doesn't like, doesn't like hurt having it there. The only kids that will really come in is the winter sports athletes. If they have practice those days, then like, the kids that, you know, just wanna come in, hang out, do some, watch some Christmas. It's a, they don't watch Christmas movies.
Isn't it about, no, don't say that. It's also a great day for you to come and visit, because you won't be here. So you get the extra day to come in and say hello to your teachers and all your friends.
Yeah. Good day for me to come sub. Oh, yeah. But I think it would be good to do that, because it's a, a day that everyone can get out earlier. And it's also, it's a fun opportunity for kids to come to school and do something like exciting with their teachers, which is always, I mean, if I had to come to school that day, I would be happy knowing that I'm doing something fun with my teachers, like a word maze, instead of not. Something fun. I, I think that the, the A model, personally as a student, is a good option.
Thank you. Sorry to like put you on the spot.
No, that's fine. Of course. I'll, mine.
I have a question about, we have a proposed early release, release day on a Wednesday rather than a Thursday. Just wondering the rationale behind moving that date, since we've, we've had Thursdays as long as my kids have been in school, which has not been as long as other people.
I think we have one Wednesday this year as well, if I remember correctly.
I don't think so.
But let me address that.
Oh, is that a typo? Okay.
Discuss a Wednesday.
Okay.
So it could be a typo? Probably a typo.
Okay.
Which calendar is that on? I'm sorry.
It's noted on A, and then on B, it says 19th or 20th. And the 19th would be Wednesday, the 20th would be the Thursday.
All right. Let me look into that for verification. It may just be, it might just be a typo.
Okay. I'm just wondering how that would have, because that, people have Thursdays set as their day off or work or whatever, then that could trigger a lot of people with childcare issues.
I believe, I may be wrong, but I believe this is two different notes that I put on it, which one of them is the potential that we have a March date this coming year. That's a primary, the presidential primary. And I may be coming, I may be coming to you to switch the early release day because of the primary, because the primary is usually a good amount of voters. Again, we don't have to do it, but that's it. I believe this, that's what happens. Two different notes, 24, 23 and 20, 24 for March, and then March and 25 we have cross-checked. But I'll, I'll get that clear for you. My apologies for that.
I believe that's a, a school safety concern as well, if you have a certain number of people coming to the schools to vote. That, that can become a school safety issue. Dr. Baieda, in, in some districts that I've worked in in the past, when it came down to that one day of school, or half day of school for a week prior to a vacation, I remember one district making that decision based on costs, the cost it takes to heat everything up and get everything going just for one day or for one half day. And given that we just came off of several fiscal conversations, I, I just wondered what that cost or cost savings might look like.
Yeah, I, I, that's a great question. And that's actually another great way to look at it. Not just from what Morgan said, educationally, is it the benefit of actually opening that day? And I say that respectfully, that, that it's a difficult day. Second is, with all of the questions around student attendance and chronic absenteeism, it just leads to a bigger discussion. And then three, I think it's the comment you just made, that, you know, we can keep our boilers and everything at X degrees, instead of everything on, on a Monday, having to start reheating it, just makes it more expensive. There's no doubt about that, because every, every late Sunday into early Monday, we kick up the heat so that our buildings are reasonably heated for the Monday start. So, yes.
If I may add, another thing also, is during that season, there's also winter sports. So regardless, there will be people in the building most likely on that Monday. I know this year, at least, there's most likely gonna be either a practice or a game, because those usually go up to the 23rd, and then they cut off until around the 26th or 27th. So regardless, at some point in that week, I would say that somebody will have to be in the building anyways. But I don't know, just a thought from observation.
Maybe you check with the athletic director?
Yeah, we won't have schedules for next year this early. The only thing that we could do is the AD could be working off the idea of that, that Friday and Saturday is the last game or practices, and then we're closed at 23rd, 24th, 25th, even 26th. We reopen on the, something like that. Those schedules won't get released until well into the spring.
So this is still, look, if you have any more comments, maybe we can direct them to Dr. Baieda. Thank you, Mr. Ford, for your work on this. And that. So this is still something to decide for next time. The next item we have to consider is this form for the student registration packet. This would be an addition for high school students regarding disciplinary actions for their records. Dr. Baieda, if you want to add some more to this.
Yes, I'd love to. So before you, what you have is a verification of disciplinary hearings for students that are transferring to Stoughton Public Schools. I've used this in the past. The idea here is for us to have, from the prior school, a verification that there are no records of students that have been involved with major issues specifically that involve law enforcement, that involve criminal situations, that involve drugs in school, that involve weapons in school, and so on and so forth. And what it does is it, it places the, the beginning of that ownership, that if in fact you have a hearing for a student, you have to by law complete that hearing from A through Z. You can't stop the hearing and the process, and all of a sudden say, well, you know, if you want to enroll tomorrow, you go to Stoughton High School, you know, we won't say anything. We gotta stop this game that's happening between districts. We don't do it. Thank you very much to our people. But we do, and, and I know Mr. Ford and I've had this sidebar a number of times, we do have some local districts that we would like to see the John Hancock of the administrator responsible signing off and saying, I verify that there's no record of this, no record, no record, no record, and sign it and give it to us as part of the process. If a student is involved in a significant issue outside of school, and they are in fact expelled from a school, they cannot attend another public school for a minimum of 45 or 90 days, depending on the situation, and up to a year, even though now the year is actually more of a 90-day, and you have to review it. You can continue the 90, another 90 days. But you, you can't just say it's the full academic year. But what we want, what we want to say is, when we welcome students, we want you here. But we also need to make sure that the verification process for you coming here is that you're coming into a building that's safe, and you are gonna keep it safe, and you're gonna be part of joining our, our student body with, with no prior significant issues. We have the right in any of these cases to hold our own hearing. If the student enrolls, and something wasn't done, we have the right to hold that hearing. So, and, and put forth our own disciplinary action.
Question, Armando, yes?
If a school refuses to sign this, what, what can we?
If a school refuses to sign this, what can we do?
We can't do anything except for me being very angry and telling them exactly how I feel. I mean, we've got to understand that, that, I'm very much a supporter of positive ways of getting students re-enrolled into school and I'm happy to support that. But there are situations that are happening right now where we see situations of students whose disciplinary record is bigger than my medical file. I don't know if that's a good thing, but my point is that it's a very long file and that, that we have all of these situations of behavior and, and no real acts of did you really hold this hearing because somebody wasn't in altercation that should have required a hearing? Now, a hearing doesn't mean that the, that they were found, that they did something wrong. It just means that you went through the actual process and allows for us to ask some more questions.
I was, actually, I was kind of surprised we can even ask that question.
Well, you know what, there's a couple of different ways to do this, right? And one of the questions I've always asked, and as you know, I came from a school choice district, right? So during that process, I can't just keep students out, but we utilize the form in the process a way to saying, if you want to come here, you got to come here with a pretty clean record, if you will. It doesn't necessarily mean that I'm still not allowing you in. It just means that we need to know more information about why there are some issues going on here that haven't happened in the past. Somebody could challenge this as much as they want, go ahead. I'm from the firm believer that we should be signing off to say, hey, Johnny's transferring and no, I haven't had to deal with any of this stuff with Johnny. It's just common sense, it's not passing the buck.
Can I ask a question? Aside from the transparency of disclosure from the town and the, what did you say? You guys, the hearing, are there other methods of monitoring, I guess, the school is doing for that particular individual if something were to occur?
Yeah, so you're talking right now or you're talking if in fact there was a check off here and the student was?
Correct.
Well, there's a couple of different things. Number one, we now have knowledge and information, right? Doesn't stop us from asking, but now we also have, doesn't stop us from asking the parent and the student at any point. What we're just asking is for a verification coming from another school system. It doesn't stop the student from enrolling. It just provides us information and allows us the opportunity to say what our expectations are. And oh, by the way, if in fact something were to happen a second time and now it happens at OMS or Stone High School, those are usually the two schools you'll see this type of stuff, typically it's high school. It allows for us to kick this up another notch in terms of what we decide to have as a disciplinary action.
So are we monitoring or are we waiting for something to occur?
We monitor, but we have to be very careful about how we do monitor. And so this gives us another piece of information.
Can I just ask what we currently have in there for when students register? Is there, is it just simply kind of transferring?
Yeah, it's similar, it's just not as detailed. So we ask for the general, have they had significant disciplinary? This is more specifically asking for hearings, 37H, H and a half, H and three quarters hearings, which is, I think, a better way to ask for it. Are you really asking if a student had a hearing, something significant happened? So then you can sort of follow up with questions about it. School districts are required to send this significant discipline information. That is a requirement that they send, they're just not always consistently great about sending accurate information. So I think asking about hearings specifically is a good way to do it.
Have we ever had another school say, yep, you're getting a problem student?
Yes, sure, yeah, just to be honest, as a principal, I've gotten a courtesy call here and there. And then, you know, you've not gotten them here and there. We've gotten a lot of students where you found out something happened at the other school and yes, to monitor, but also to help the student, like you want to help that student. If they were struggling with something of a disciplinary nature, you would like to help that student. So it's not, it's just as supportive as it is, you know, knowing what you have.
I would say probably with the SEL program that we're putting in our schools, we'll probably get a lot of students that send them to Stoughton because they have a nice program to help with.
So let's remember that we are a residency community, right? So we have a very thorough residency requirement and we have our truancy offices and all of that, unlike, for example, what I came from, which is a different. But, but when that student transfers here, we still have the right to ask some of these critical questions. And like Matthew said, I've been a principal, I've gotten the courtesy call and then I've gotten the headache. And our number one job is to try to find different ways to keep things as safe as possible. This is just one little thing of asking a little bit more detail when a student is transferring to the district. And I know Jonathan has dealt with this issue here, a number of issues when, especially as we started our registration office. I don't know if you want to speak to it.
Sorry.
What happens particularly to high school of students out on a long-term suspension or they're expelled, we don't actually have to enroll them. But what we found is other, and what happens now is the other school district is then responsible for providing services to that student while they're out, even if it's indefinitely. And what we've found in the past, and I've found this as a principal quite frequently here in Massachusetts, is certain school districts would in fact take the student right up to the hearing and then put the hearing in abeyance, provided, to give them the opportunity to enroll in another school district and relieve themselves of the responsibility of educating that student. And it just creates a really, really tough situation where, you know, you could have 37H hearing, 37H and a half, 37H and three quarters now, and they never actually hold a hearing. So there's no accountability for the student and you end up inhering that student and everything that comes with it. So, you know, not everybody is an honest broker. And this is just another attempt to try to put that additional level of clarity for us in terms of understanding who we're getting. So if this student needs help, we can give them help, or if we just understand what the triggers might be or what's going on with that kid, so that, you know, we can be responsive as a school district or as a school administration, it just goes a long way to help the situation, especially for the kids that are going to struggle in school and might need our help the most.
Any other questions or comments for the committee? All right, so do we need to vote to approve this or is this a kind of a consensus or?
It's a consensus, you don't have to vote, you don't vote your registration packet.
I was going to say.
We just wanted to make sure that you had it, that if somebody came up or a question or whatever, that yes, we could do it. And we thought, we think it's, it's all about a little bit more detail so we can get adults to talk about facts and information. And again, it does not stop a student from coming into Stoughton Public Schools, but it does give, to Jonathan's point, the opportunity for us to really put a plan in place that could be more successful.
I just wanted to ask that monitoring is positive and negative with regards to the students, basically, so that you can, like you said, put a plan in place, evaluate them and figure out what resources or whatever they need going forward.
Expectations.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to acceptance of warrants. We had some warrants, did you guys get a chance to sign them? Oh, have they, did they get a chance to sign them and look at them? All right, let's, let's give them a chance to sign them and look at them before we vote to approve them.
Yeah, no, we have warrants.
Yes, we had a whole stack. We've got to make sure that you could just sign and approve before we do that.
Do you only need three signatures?
That one, you're good, we have one, two, three more.
Working on a one pager, Mr. Barboza.
Yes.
Sorry, I don't have any TV for those at home, but. We're almost done, a few more things, we should be pretty quick, so. Just want to get that on top so we don't lose that. You guys all left me high and dry at the parade of lights, just looking at Dr. Baieda, so.
Don't bring my dog next time.
I know, we were talking about it, we should bring it up. He shouldn't have waved. All right, so everyone's had a chance to look at the warrants right now. Can I have a motion to accept the warrants? All right, made by Fabian, a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Lindsay, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion's carried five zero. Next is acceptance of minutes for November 21st, 2023. This time I like for any amendments or corrections to the amendments for November 21st. I do have one, also in attendance, we had Mr. Cancelary and Mr. Guglia. I believe we had, we were missing a principal, but I think those.
Ms. Feeney was out.
Ms. Feeney was out, that's correct. But we did have those two additional principals there as well, so I want to make sure that they were noted. They were over in the corner, so our recording secretary couldn't see them. So do we have any other comments, amendments?
I have one.
Yes.
On the top of page four, as Mr. Shannon asked about working with the town on items, I'd like to add after that, to create efficiencies of scale.
Okay.
Prior to the conjunction.
All right, so that's to our recording secretary, that's top of page four, first and it's after items to create efficiencies of scale is the addition. Any other amendments or corrections? All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
All right, the motion was made by Lindsay, a second. Seconded by Fabian, it's been moved and seconded, vote?
Aye.
Obstained.
Obsteed, aye. All right, the motion was carried four zero with Armando Obstein. And the next item is the elementary school building project updating responsibilities. This is quick, the next building committee meeting is Wednesday, December 13th, tomorrow at 7:00 PM here in the conference room at the district offices. There is also a virtual attendance option. This has been pointed, posted as a joint school committee meeting, so Armando, if you would like to attend in person or virtually, if that is possible. The meeting is going to focus on the informational videos that we should be posting soon and we'll be having more public forums beginning in January, more community forums, some of them like the big community forum we have, and then also starting to visit places of worship, you know, some of the Portuguese societies, those types of places to start to give presentations. So now that I have free time after this teacher's negotiation, it's going to be going away, but I have to rope some of you in to helping out with that. We'll also be talking about the recent meeting they had with the Energy and Sustainability Committee and an update on the schematic design. I've had a sneak peek and it looks awesome, so I can't wait for you guys to see that. So, anything else to add?
You nailed it, sneak peek is pretty good.
It's, it's so kid-centered, it's so student-centered, it's just fantastic. The kids are going to love it. Other matters, Lindsay, do you have an update to the, for the Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
Yeah, just a really quick update. We met last Thursday, December 7th, after not meeting in November. So we accepted the audit, we worked with a new auditor this year, so that'll be posted to the website and sent to member districts by the 31st, so that's coming our way. Also approved the cumulative surplus from last year, so there are credits coming back to member districts. I shared this with Catherine and Dr. Baieda and Heidi, but it's not, you know, it's not a huge credit, but it's a credit, which is great, like we love that. So there's also the budget report, the PAC is pretty financially healthy. We did not raise tuitions this year for member districts, which is, that's an update from like the beginning of the summer, but just like it came up again because we just need to be prudent around finances, but there's no cause for concern right now. And then we also approved the FY '23 annual report, which includes information about the range of services the PAC offers, programs, outcomes, like lots of really good information in there. So that will also be coming out to member districts and on the website soon. But for anyone on the committee or members of the public who are interested in learning more about the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, would recommend checking that out. And that is, that is my update.
Great, great, anything else? Any other correspondence or anything?
I did have one item, I just realized I did take notes for the social emotional learning training.
Oh, great.
For mask, I meant to print them off, I had some printer issues.
Okay, all right.
So I will email them out to the school committee.
All right, and this is the training provided by the MASC, the Massachusetts Association School Committee. I was not able to make it.
Mr. Colontoni, I've got a sneak.
Okay, it's great, so we'll look for notes for that, thank you, Chris. If there's nothing else, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, January 9th at 7:00 PM here in the school committee conference room at the district office. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Before.
Sorry.
Happy Hanukkah, holidays and Merry Christmas to all of our staff, students and our families and to all of you as well.
Yes, thank you, seconded, motion to adjourn. All right, Fabian, nobody, I thought everyone would jump at that, a second?
Second.
There we go, all right, so tie between Lindsay and Chris Shannon, it's been moved and seconded, roll call vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion's been carried five zero, this meeting is adjourned at, what is it, nine? Forty-something, thank you all for coming, good, happy holidays and good night.